I'd like to call the January meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone please rise for our invocation, immediately followed by the pledge of allegiance. Since Mr. Jimmy Rogers is not here tonight, I'm going to lead us in our invocation. Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to serve Haywood County schools. We pray for your guidance and wisdom as we undertake the decisions that we make, that they might be for the betterment of all concerned and glorifying unto you. Thank you for all the many blessings that we enjoy in this great country, and we ask for peace throughout the world. We ask that our students, staff, and administrators be safe throughout this year, and that we are successful at our task of educating our young people. Now, Lord, be with us as we conduct the business of our schools. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. First of all, I'd like to say thanks to everyone. We postponed our meeting Monday and moved it over to Thursday, and I appreciate everybody's effort to be here tonight. I know it's short notice, but the weather holds no prisoners, and therefore you adjust your lifestyle to what happens in the weather. So I didn't want anybody to be out on icy roads, and I think that was probably the right call. But anyway, thank you for coming tonight and attending our board meeting. Mr. Rogers is going to be trying to join us. Mr. Jimmy Rogers will be joining us electronically if we get it put together. So just be aware of that, that he's at a meeting for us, and he's going to try to call in and be a part of the meeting. He was in our closed session earlier this evening, just for your information. Board members, our next regular board meeting will be February the 13th here at the Education Center at 7:00 PM. And we also have an Altrusa Soup fundraiser. If you haven't been to this, this is a big event, and the money comes right back to Haywood County schools. So I'd urge you to try to support them, and one way that we have supported them in the past is this Board of Education has bought $100 worth of tickets, and I've got them here in front of them, but I would like to, at this time, ask someone to make a motion that we do this officially rather than just someone making a decision to do it. But we, and this is something we've done in the past. Again, the money comes right back to Haywood County schools. So I would ask for a motion to approve $100 for the Altrusa fundraiser for Haywood County Schools Foundation.
So move.
Mr. Bobby Rogers has made the motion. I hear a second.
Second.
Second. Mr. Henson, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, and Ginny Valier, thank you. I want to get your name. I've been working on it. But anyway, we'll get, make sure that you get paid and get that to Altrusa. The other thing I'd like to remind everyone about, our board is going to have a joint meeting with the Haywood Community College Board of Trustees on Thursday, February the 23rd at 5:00 PM, and we haven't decided on location yet. Is that correct? It is at HCC. So on my notes, it says to be determined, but it will be at Haywood Community Colleges. I assume it'll be in their, at their facility, and we'll get there. Okay. All right. Thank you. Another announcement, if you have, have not received an invitation, you are invited. You just need to let, in the Haywood County Chamber of Commerce that sponsors the elected officials reception. It is at the Wells Event and Reception Centers. It's a nice event, and they recognize school board members as well as other elected officials in the county. It's held on January 23rd from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and there's no cost to elected officials. If you do take a guess, there is a charge for their attendance. But just please let them know and respond whether you're coming, yes or no. And if you haven't received an invitation, get with Ms. Brooke King, and she can contact CC and make sure that they know that you're coming or not going to come, okay? I'd ask you to respond, please. Thank you. Without objection, I would ask to add Mr. Mark Shepherd to the agenda to give us an update on the Sherrill Center. Let's do it right after the, well, right before the policies, and he'll be up here ready to do the policies. So that'd be all right, Mark? If I forget to do that part of it, just remind me. Ginny Wood Valier will give a calendar update, and let's see. Do you want to do it right after your PHS Band recognition, Ms. Ginny? Would that be okay? All right. And then we will also add the January 5th closed session minutes to the agenda for approval, included in the motion that we'll have under item number 10. We'll just add that under there. Okay? Is there any objection to adding those agenda items at this time?
No, Mr. Chairman. Building and Grounds needs only agenda for one matter of business, please.
Okay.
And Finance adds one additional item.
Okay, Finance has one additional item. Okay. We'll add Building and Grounds right after Policies. And the Finance Committee, we'll just do under Regular Financial Reports. Okay, Mr. Henson? All right. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Without objection, that's the way the agenda will be presented tonight. Now, we have some special recognition, and I would like to recognize Ginny Wood Valier.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte, it is my pleasure to recognize the Pisgah High School Band of Bears. The Band of Bears have really come alive this year with 16 first-place trophies. In four different competitions, the band walked away with 21 different awards. They were ranked superior and excellent, voted as the fan favorite band of the day, as well as the 1A, 2A, and 3A champions. I'm so proud to recognize the band director, Stephen Paris, and the Band of Bears. And we have a certificate of recognition that says, "This certificate of recognition is awarded to PHS Band of Bears in recognition of your outstanding achievement and performance awarded the 12th Day of January 2017 by Haywood County Schools."
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We got their picture before we do.
First of all, just like to say thank you so much. My name is Stephen Paris. I'm the band director at Pisgah High School. I've been very blessed this year with some great, great students who worked incredibly hard during the fall. Our, our normal fall schedule is we practice Monday night, Tuesday night, Thursday night from 5:30 to 8:30. We play at ballgames on Friday nights. Saturdays, we usually, depending on where our competition is, we have left as early as 6:00 AM and got back at midnight. So it's a pretty power-packed, intense fall time for band students. The good news is that these students are also the students that are in AP classes, advanced classes, and other leadership positions at school, no future valedictorians of Pisgah High School, so they're, they're able to manage their time wisely and do lots and lots of great things and represent our school, excuse me, in our school system. So I'm very proud of them, very thankful for their hard work. Also, I'm very thankful for your continued support of our arts programs, specifically the band program, because for these children, it is the highlight of, of their high school career. So thank you for that, and I would like to introduce the folks behind me, just are part of our leadership team. Each section has leadership that they, we have to go, basically it's like a job interview. They come interview for a position, and it's helping also teach them some life skills there. You're, you're looking at some future doctors, lawyers, probably somebody coming after your seat on the school board at some point, but these, these are some great, great kids. I would like to introduce our drum major for this year, Mr. Desmond Worrell. I would like to say just a few things.
Just want to thank you for your support. I know this is my fifth year in marching band, so I started in my eighth grade year. And I know for like all of my leadership team here, we, we strive to, you know, have a great band program, and with your support, we're able to do that and recruit and get a lot of people involved and make a lot of people happy. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, folks. Thank you. Thank you.
Again, I'm Desmond Worrell. I'm the drum major. This is Austin Lloyd. She's one of our woodwind captains. Behind her is Hannah Davis. She's the other woodwind captain for us. Beside Hannah is Aubrey Sall. She's one of the three colored guard captains we have. Rosalyn White is one of our percussion captains, along with Mackenzie Squires. Austin Bossier is our low brass captain. Thomas Long is one of our band captains and higher repertoire leader.
Well, thank you very much. Congratulations. We have seen it in the paper. I've had good coverage of the PHS marching bears and Band of Bears, and y'all doing a great job. Thank you so much. Keep her playing good music. Thank you. Dr. Ann Garrett, next on our agenda. Okay, you want to do the calendar? Okay. I almost forgot again after we said it. Almost, I did. Just go ahead and say it. I forgot.
So for your information, you have the revised calendar for the 2016-17 year reflecting the two snow days that we had on the 9th and 10th of January. Are there any questions about this calendar?
Anyone have any questions? We don't need to vote on it, or we do need to?
No, I don't think so.
Just for information. That's what I thought. Okay. Wanted to make sure. We didn't want you to leave here without what you needed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, January is School Board Recognition Month. At this time, I would like to recognize our board members. Our school system benefits from the dedicated energies and countless hours devoted to our Board of Education. These people unselfishly contribute their time and talents toward the advancement of public education. Even though we're making a special effort in January to show our appreciation to our board members, we recognize your contributions that reflect a year-round commitment on your part. You're dedicated individuals who are committed to the continuing success of public schools in Haywood County. With the advice and counsel of the educational professionals they hire, our school board has an impact on virtually every aspect of the school system. This is a huge responsibility and one that is not taken lightly. Thank you, board members, for your hard work, dedication, and support of our school system. At this time, I'd like to present each of our board members with a certificate of appreciation, which says, "Certificate of Appreciation." This certificate of appreciation is awarded to, "The Haywood County School System acknowledges and extends sincere appreciation for your service as a school board member. Thank you for your dedication to the students, parents, and faculty of Haywood County Schools." Awarded the 12th Day of January 2017. Our first person I'd like to recognize is our chairman, Mr. Chuck Francis, who serves as ex officio of all the committees that we have.
We think your certificate's on the bottom.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
Vice Chair, Mr. Jim Francis, who also serves on the Finance Committee, Special Issues, and Calendar. I appreciate you.
These are not in order. I could just give you one, and y'all could swap them later. There you are. Thank you, Mr. Francis. Thank you very much.
Mr. Jimmy Rogers, who's chair of Building and Grounds and serves on the Policy Committee. Mr. Stephen Kirkpatrick, who's chair of the Special Issues and also serves on the Building and Grounds. Thank you, Stephen. Mr. Larry Henson, who's chair of Finance. Mrs. Ann Barrett, who serves on the Finance Committee. Mr. Ronnie Clark, who serves on the Finance Committee and Special Issues Committee. Mr. Scott Smith, who serves on the Building and Grounds Committee. And Mr. Spat Smathers, who has been our school board attorney for 35 years.
I hope to go with it. I'm old age of 95. Especially this week.
Thank you, board members and Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for the recognition. We appreciate that. Ms. Ginny Wood Valier for her special presentation.
Rosalyn was here for two things. So if Rosalyn wants to come in. Chairman Francis, members of the board, it's my pleasure to present to you our 2016 Christmas Card Contest winner, Rosalyn White. Rosalyn is a junior at Pisgah High School, where she is in Ms. Flincham's art class. Rosalyn loves all the arts and is a part of the Band of Bears, which you just saw. When she plays the maromba, maramba? She, she had to help me with that one. Rosalyn teachers, teachers say that she is a motivated student with one, with a wonderful creative edge. On behalf of the Haywood County School System, I would like to present you with a $100 check, 25 printed cards for next year now, and your framed artwork. Congratulations.
Beautiful.
We had Todd and Mark, and some of them were trying to buy it and auction it off and from her before we even started, so that's how it ended. I forgot her certificate. Hold on. This certificate of recognition is awarded to Rosalyn White in recognition of being selected as the 2016 Holiday Card Contest winner awarded the 12th Day of January 2017 by Haywood
I wanted you to be aware that each year, on behalf of Haywood County Schools, we send the contest winner card to school boards across the whole state. So your card was seen by board members from across the state of North Carolina, and congratulations on a fine job. Thank you. Ms. King, is anyone signed up to address the board tonight? Thank you. Board members, you had an opportunity to look at the December 12th closing regular session minutes and also the January 5th closed session minutes. At this time, we need a motion for their approval. I'll make that motion. Mr. Kirkpatrick's made the motion. I hear a second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Ann Barrett. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on our agenda, board members, you may recall, if we do any type of training locally, we can get continuing education credits, and I think we need to take advantage of those as much as possible due to the cost of travel to Raleigh or other cities and all, and so if, this time, I would like to, someone to make a motion that we approve the new board orientation training credit for our new board members and myself that was in attendance for the board member, new board member orientation.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the credit hours for the new board orientation.
Okay, I hear a second to the motion. Second, Dr. Bobby Rogers. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all for your attendance. That was very nice that we did that and had good participation. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have an addition, wasn't it? Mark Shepherd is going to give us an update on the Sherrill Center.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As far as an update on the Sherrill Center, we want to put in place a set of regulations that would go in the, the policy manual as a regulation for our 50/30 facility use policy that would just help Tuscola guide them in how they would manage the Sherrill Center moving forward. You know, the, the center was built as a community center to be used by, you know, everybody in the county, but after 10 years of really no revenue stream to, you know, be dedicated to keep it maintained and no real scheduling process at all, it's been kind of willy-nilly who's in there at what time, who's supposed to be there at what time, and who's going to pay to repair and replace things as they need to be done. And it's not in horrible shape, but we also don't want it to get in horrible shape. So we've tried to come up with some, you know, some guidelines for them to use. Number one, scheduling would go through Tuscola, through their office. They would have just a little simple form people could use to request a time and date to use it, and, you know, Tuscola would be in charge of granting that and keep, you know, keep track of who's supposed to be in there and when. The biggest holdup on that, and actually, I talked with Carol Fox, who's the athletic director there last week, and she said they're going to go ahead and start letting people use it, but we've been trying to wait for the, the slide key card system to be installed in that. Those people were supposed to come this Monday, got snowed out, you know, so Tuesday, they're supposed to show up and, you know, show that product and how it'd work on that door, but Joe said our people are going to be installing it. So in the next week, you know, to a month, that, that will be in place. Until then, we'll just use the key or the system where the door is open like it has been, which basically the timed lock goes on, off at 9:00 and stays open until 9:00 at night. So when we do have the electronic system in place, you know, it'd be very much like a hotel key. If you come in and you rent the place and you're supposed to be there on the, on the 1st and the 15th from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, that's when the card will work. You know, they can program it, swap the card, hand it to you, and that's the only times it'll work on that door. Very controllable. So that's a pretty good deal. The next thing we, we were concerned about was the insurance or at least the liability factor of what happens if someone's in there, get hurt, you know, or whatever else could happen. And we talked to Mr. Smathers about this, and, you know, we're okay with charging or at least requiring insurance for a team to come. You know, most teams, most organized teams have an insurance policy anyway, so we would just want a rider to be provided for us for that. For individuals, we hated to go as far as charging, because those policies can easily be 300 bucks. But the concern was, where does our insurance carrier stand on that? So Angie Gardner checked for us, and our insurance company, our liability insurance company, does feel that that is within the purvey of what we do as a school system. We, we were questioning that, but their, their example was that it's just like any other athletic facility that is used after hours, like people walking on a track, like children that go from the neighborhood and play on a elementary school playground. So in that respect, they would cover it, you know, if, if something happened in there. We are going to require those folks, you know, just individuals that come to have a waiver of liability filled out where they would, you know, release us from, from, I guess, a negligent suit, but we would at least have that in hand. So for payment, the fees that Tuscola wants to charge are $10 an hour for individuals, $25 an hour for groups, groups with the exception of official Little League softball and baseball teams. I mean, teams that have an official Little League charter because one of the large contributors to the center was Major League Baseball, and one of their stipulations was that Little League teams would be able to use that for free. And fair enough, so that's being taken into account for that. And of course, we, we would enumerate that we expect people to take care of the center, leave it, you know, trash picked up in the proper order when they leave it and all, all that kind of stuff. And it's designated specifically for non-profit use. You know, there would be no stipulations for people earning money by training people in baseball to use the center. That was also one of the original, really priorities of, of creating the center, that it was just a community use and, and not to be used for people to make money out of. So speaking with Carol Fox yesterday, she's ready to go ahead and start. She's got several requests for people to use the center. She started calling those back today and getting in touch with them, and she's going to start lining up people to use the center. And now, the regulation does not have to be, you know, passed by the board proper, but it would be attached to Policy 50/30 as a regulation, you know, just to be used for guidance on how to, how to run the center.
I've got a couple of questions. Now, the Little League, did you say it was free?
Free.
Now, the Little League, how are you, how are you going to prove that they're a Little League? Are they going to need something from the Little League?
They need to show their charter.
President, vice president from the charter? And also, the money that you're going to take up for the $10, $25 group, is it specifically going to go right back to that, or is it going in the general fund?
It's, it's going to Tuscola. That's a good question. It's not like the rest of our facility use where it comes to the central office, goes into a pot and gets, you know, earmarked out for custodial and, and, you know, maintenance issues and then split between the school and the maintenance department. This will stay at Tuscola in a dedicated This will stay at Tuscola in a dedicated fund for maintenance and upkeep of the Sherrill Center.
So up until you get the swipe cards, which you said Tuesday?
The company is coming out Tuesday to start North Canton, and I'm going to take them to the Sherrill Center to look at that lock and give it over.
But you're saying-
We'll be ordering a lock for the Sherrill Center next week.
But you're saying Ms. Fox at Tuscola right now is calling people back?
Yep.
Because it's been, I don't know if it's been used, it's been a month and a half now, I think.
Yeah, she's been getting plenty of phone calls.
Right, I mean-
People are interested in using it.
Right.
So she's calling them back. Yeah, we spoke yesterday about it.
Yeah, because I mean, she needs to get people back in there.
Right.
Baseball and softball is getting ready to start up.
Sure is.
Yeah. Any other questions from Mr. Shepherd? What we have is a wonderful asset. We just need to protect it and make sure that it's not abused, but used. And I remember very well when this board so graciously was offered this facility by the Moody family and the Sherrill family. It was an emotional time, of course, but it was also an asset I think that we do need to protect. And, you know, I live real close to there, and there's people in and out there all hours of the night.
Yeah.
There's got to be some type of control-
Yeah.
-to make sure that we, as liability and as, we protect that asset. So I appreciate the fact that this has come about, and my understanding is the Moody family is in agreement with this, and so-
They are. We met with them, and, you know, the original intent that it would just be a free community center, and they were, you know, at first hesitant, but very understanding of the fact that there were going to have to be some funds collected to keep the center in good repair and, you know, with stuff replaced as it needed to be. So they were good with that.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next is your policy, so we'll just go right to the next one.
Okay, so the only policy we have that has been up for First Read a couple of times now, and for the last 30 days, has been in this version, Operation of School Nutrition Services, so 6220 is up for approval.
Okay, just time we entertain a motion that we approve Policy Number 6220.
Motion approved.
Mr. Henson's made the most. I hear a second.
I'll second.
Say with Mr. Francis, any question or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you, sir.
Now, we have a request from the Building and Grounds Committee to be added to the agenda. I think Mr. or Dr. Bobby Rogers has got that information.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Building and Grounds makes the following motion to grant Joe Buchanan, the maintenance director, purchasing approval for a newly, new, fully-equipped 15- to 16-foot box truck at the best possible price. This truck would be utilized by Food Services.
Okay, do I hear a second to the motion?
Second.
Say with Mr. Kirkpatrick, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Have you got a price range?
Yeah, we, we're saying it should be somewhere south of $35,000.
$36,000 was our quote. So that's better than what we looked at the other day?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we still looking at Ken or Fords or?
I've priced Ford, Chevrolet, and Dodge, and they go from $34,000 to $36,000.
$36,000.
About $3,000 difference between the three.
Okay.
So I'm going to go back and negotiate some more and see what I can use.
All right. The current truck's pretty old, best I can recall. I mean, it's an old truck.
Well, the one they're using now is the one we ran away with 10 years ago whenever we bought the world.
Okay.
It's blown up.
I got you. It's well-used.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor in a second.
Make a motion.
We already got it, I'm sorry.
Discussion.
It was still in discussion. Anything else? I'm sorry. All right. Being no further discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I would like to make one comment now that the vote's passed. I think Dr. Nolte made mention of it in the Building and Grounds. It's a, it's a unique display of cooperation for the maintenance department to be looking after and helping the Food Services Department. Joe and Allison, we can, he's working together on that effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else from Building and Grounds? Okay, nothing else. All right, then we have the Finance Committee from Mr. Henson.
The Finance Committee met when, overall, the regular monthly reports and everything was in order, and I make a motion to approve monthly financial reports.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Henson. I hear a second.
I'll second.
Well, he beat you. Mr. Clark, he's made the second. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And you had another item, I believe?
And the other item is, I make a motion, Todd needed this to be approved, so I make a motion that we approve to surplus a 2005 F-550 dump truck.
Okay. Do I hear a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Say with Mr. Francis, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Now, is this a dump truck? I mean, where's this dump truck come from? Why are we surplus-
It's one of our trucks. The design of the truck's just not something that really fits us anymore, and so we feel like it's better use now for us to surplus that and get what we can out of it.
Earn it to cash.
And to use that money to maybe look at what we might need to do differently.
Dump truck for a box truck?
Well, actually, it's a dump truck for a dump truck.
That's why I was getting ready to say, is that sort of surplus in that dump truck that we bought?
Okay. Very good. Any other question or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Anything else from Finance Committee? Thank you very much, Mr. Henson. Dr. Ann for our personnel.
Mr. Francis, members of the board, for your information, you have four separation from employments. You have two employee status changes and two leave of absences. For your approval, you have seven employments, 12 employee status changes, four contracted services, nine substitutes, 27 employee coaches, two non-employee coaches, and 10 volunteer services.
This time, we entertain a motion that the personnel be approved as presented.
Make a motion.
Ms. Barrett's made a motion on the, to be approved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say with Mr. Smith, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Garrett. If there's nothing else to come before this body, meeting adjourned.